I'll wait for your sign, Kate.
Yep, there are 16 ready to populate, so just give them a moment. Okay, Mr. Chair.
Good evening and welcome to the April 14th meeting, 2020 meeting of the Needham Select Board. And before I start this meeting, I'd like to read a preliminary statement. This is John Bullion, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kate?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Tim?
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Maureen?
Yes.
Anne?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of the Needham Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. Have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Needham Select Board is convening by Zoom app, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First item on the agenda, board reorganization. I would like to call for nominations for Chair of the Needham Select Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mo Handel as Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. To nominate Bo Handel as Chair. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those, oh. Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
The chair is in the affirmative. That is a unanimous vote. Next, I'd like to move to nominations for Vice Chair. Do I have any, any nomination or nomination?
Chair, I would like to nominate Matthew Borelli for Vice Chair.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I'd like to go to the vote. Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
The chair is in the affirmative. The vote is unanimous to elect Matt Borelli as Vice Chair. Next, I'd like nominations for Secretary Clerk of the Board.
Mr. Chair, I move Ms. Mary Ann Cooley as Secretary Clerk of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion by members of the board? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt, Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
The chair is yes, unanimous vote. Mary Ann Cooley is elected Secretary Clerk of the Board. Now normally, for those people viewing this evening, we would stand up and change positions. I don't, okay, we just did that. That was just done. I don't know who did that. Who did that? Okay, well, that, that just happens and now we've changed positions. I'd like the board, the Select Board regular meeting schedule for the year. Was there a question about May 26th, Kate?
Dan, are you going to turn it over?
No, I'm going to turn it over after I get through Recording Secretary. I'm going to go through the, the whole board reorg and then I'm going to turn it over to Mo.
Mr. Chair, the, the only question is, the May 26th is now the town election?
Yep.
Yes, so the, the board may wish to move that meeting to the 27th, but we thought we would just give it another meeting to make that decision because we just don't know what's going to happen in May.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the Select Board regular meeting schedule for the year?
So, Mr. Chair, I move the meeting schedule for the year be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mo?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
The chair is in the affirmative, unanimous vote to accept our meeting schedule. Next, I'd like nominations for Committee Secretary for the Select Board.
Mr. Chair?
Andy Sincotta?
Second.
We have a motion for Sandy Sincotta?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mo?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
The chair is in the affirmative, unanimous vote. And last item on the board reorganization schedule for this evening is Recording Secretary for the Select Board. Do I have a nomination?
Nomination of Mary Hunt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mo?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
The chair is in the affirmative. And with that, I will, you can move me around if you want, or keep me there as one of the Hollywood squares. And I will relinquish the chair to the new chair, Mo Handel. Congratulations, Mo, and take it away.
Thank you, John. Before I begin the next item on the agenda, I want to thank you personally for your leadership, especially during this very, very difficult time. So congratulations for a great year, John, and thank you again for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to say anything?
I'm presuming we're going to get to celebrate John another day.
I would hope.
We're going to do that, right?
The chairman's dinner was April 6th. Michael Grace sent me, he sent me an email on the afternoon of April 6th, which was the date we had originally scheduled. And he said, "I'm looking forward to seeing you tonight and celebrating." I said, "Really? I guess we'll be doing it alone." Yeah, we'll figure out a time in the future to celebrate when all of this is done. Yeah. So, thank you. Thank you all. Been a fun year, interesting year, to say the least.
It has indeed.
Like this.
Well, again, thank you. And the, the next item on our agenda is-
Dan has a question.
For a grant of location on John Street, Maureen Carroll from Eversource is here to make the presentation for this grant.
Okay, good evening. My name is Maureen Carroll, and I'm here on behalf of the Eversource Company. The first petition is going to be on John Street. It's going to be southwesterly from pole 312 slash four. It's going to be approximately 443 feet south of Central Ave, a distance of about 37 feet of conduit. And this is going to provide electric service to a new home at 37 John Street.
Kate, is everything in order?
Yes, it is.
On this? Are there any members of the public present on this Zoom meeting who desire to be heard?
Mr. Chair, I did ask Sandy Sincotta to use the raise your hand feature to make sure that we knew it was working, and she has done that. So we can, you can put your hand down, Sandy. So we know it's working, Mr. Chair. If there's anybody else, there's nobody else who's raised their hand.
That being the case, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install 37 feet of conduit in John Street. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 37 John Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, is there any, we'll take a vote. Mary Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Motion, and the chair is yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Proceed, Maureen. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Edgewater Drive.
Okay, so-
Ms. Carroll.
The petition is going to be on Edgewater Drive. It's going to be northerly from pole 402 slash 13. It's approximately 831 feet east of Edgewater Lane. It's a distance of about 35 feet of conduit. This is going to provide electric service to a new home at 141 Edgewater Drive.
Kate, is everything in order on this application?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Do we have any members of the public here who need, would like to comment on this matter or raise a question? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install 35 feet of conduit in Edgewater Drive. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 141 Edgewater Drive.
Mary Ann?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll come to the vote. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it's unanimous. The grant of application is granted. Thank you very much, Ms. Carroll, and we hope you be well, and we'll see you too.
One more.
I'm sorry.
One more.
Miss one.
189 Edgewater Ave, or Drive.
Okay.
Edgewater.
So, the next petition is going to be on Edgewater Drive. It's going to be southeastally from pole 402 slash 18. It's going to be approximately 72 feet south of Edgewater Lane, distance of about 11 feet of conduit. This is going to be to provide electric service to a new home at 189 Edgewater Drive.
Thank you. Kate, is this in order as well?
Yes, it is.
Is there anybody here from the public who would wish to comment or raise a question on this matter? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install 11 feet of conduit in Edgewater Drive. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 189 Edgewater Drive.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you again, Maureen. Sorry to major leave earlier than you wanted.
That's okay.
Bye, Maureen.
And we hope you stay well.
Bye, Maureen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye. The next matter on our agenda has to do with a change of ownership for Spiga Restaurant. And the town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick, is going to speak on this issue before we take it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, this item was actually continued from a prior meeting, and we'd like to push it into probably late May. But seeing as we didn't firm up the final meeting in May, we are proposing that you continue it to May 12th with the expectation that it would likely get moved to the next meeting. Our hope would be this could be handled in a meeting that's back in Town Hall.
Thank you. This requires a motion?
Yeah, no problem.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move that the board vote to continue the Spiga Restaurant change of ownership manager and beneficial interest public hearing to May 12th, 2020.
Second.
So any discussion on the motion? That being the case, all those in favor will call the roll. Matt?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is, has to do with Stormwater. And again, the town manager has a report on this before we take up the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of the items that we feel would very much benefit from having public participation. So we propose that it be continued to May 12th for the same reason, and then it should be continued again till the end of May, once you have determined your exact date.
So any comment on this before we take a motion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I vote that the board vote to continue the Stormwater mitigation assessment public hearing to May 12th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. The matter is continued. Thank you. That brings us to the annual town meeting school department warrant articles. And I would like to recognize Angelotti, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here today, inviting you here today. I know Superintendent is one of the attendees to this meeting as well. We had two warrant articles that we had requested. The first, which I believe is your former article number 43. And forgive me, I'm not sure which one, how you'd want to take these in order. There are two of them. 43 is the first that appeared on the warrant.
Oh, that's fine, Anne. However you want to discuss them, since you're making the presentation.
Sure. This is a request to allow the town to receive some federal reimbursement for foster care transportation. As you may or may not know, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, children in foster care are required to remain in their school of origin as long as it's deemed to be in the best interest of the child. The school of origin is responsible for funding the cost of transporting the child to and from school. The Executive Office of Health and Human Services, in partnership with the Department of Children and Families and DESI, have developed a methodology that would allow towns and districts to receive a share of the transportation cost, to be reimbursed rather, for a share of those transportation costs, through Title IV E, which is a section of the Social Security Act. It's estimated that districts like Needham, through such a reimbursement program, could receive about 20% of the reported costs that we would claim. We would be able to be reimbursed only for those costs that weren't funded by other federal sources, such as a special education entitlement grant or Title I. The request that we have of you is, is to allow the district to enter into a contract with the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, the Children and Families and DESI, to seek this federal reimbursement. And this request is through, under the authority of Chapter 44, Section 70. Under this statute, a city or town by vote of its town meeting, town councilor, city councilman, with the approval of the selectmen, town manager, or mayor, can authorize the district to enter into such an agreement. If authorized, the Needham, if authorized, the Needham Public Schools would begin to submit claims in FY21, based on its transportation expenses incurred this year, which we estimate to be about $14,000, and could yield a reimbursement of about $2,800 or 20% of that cost. That is the request.
Thank you. This is a report. There's no motion involved. Is there any questions that any members of the board might have? Mary Ann?
Anne, I'm just trying to be sure that I understand this. So just keeping track of who the parties are. So if a child comes to Needham and the foster parents are in Needham, then we're transporting that child back to wherever they were before they came to the foster parents. That's the-
So, right, if we are the, so if we are the school of origin, we are responsible for providing transportation because it's in the best interest of the child. Generally speaking, for the child to remain in the school of origin, even if that, even if the family has temporarily relocated or is being, or that child is being transported elsewhere. So if the, if the, if the family has moved, for instance, or the child has relocated to Boston, the Boston area, the Needham Public Schools would be the school of origin, and it would be the child's, in the child's interest to remain in the Needham Public Schools. And for us to transport the child from Boston to Needham.
Okay, I got it.
I'm not-
I was just trying to under, and is this a request that you will need to make every year? Or do you only have to make it once?
We only have to make it once, and this would require both, obviously, the town meeting approval, as well as the Select Board's approval, to allow us to enter into this agreement.
Okay, well, it makes complete sense, and it's unfortunate that all the cost isn't covered. But I understand and agree that it would be in the best interest of the child, so.
Are there any other questions or comments on, on the article? Matt?
Trying to stay within the form corners, but talking about transportation and the budget in general with everything going on, is that something that we're still paying for the school, under the school budget, or things been relaxed because of the lack of transportation over the past month and maybe to continue to the future?
Um.
Well, you not talked about that yet. I don't need to.
No, well, it, it doesn't pertain particularly to this request, but transportation has been something that has been the subject of quite a bit of, quite a bit of conversation because it's such an essential service and because the closure has had such a devastating impact on transportation companies in particular. Two of our three companies have laid ivors and, and are experiencing significant financial difficulty. All of them are requesting that we continue to make payment, at least some level of payment, in order for that business to remain a going concern, essentially to remain a viable entity that can then resume service when school reopens. And this has been a dilemma that we're working through with, because it's a service, obviously, that's not being rendered at the moment. And there are some restrictions around with state law for that. But we're working through that with all of our other districts and district counterparts and hope to continue, hope to be able to make those payments very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Thanks, Anne, very much. Appreciate it.
There is a second warrant article.
Okay.
There's a second warrant article, if you'd like me to discuss that.
Please.
The second warrant article is a request to allow the school department to create a special education stabilization fund. It's a reserve fund that would be authorized by Chapter 40, Section 13E. This is a reserve fund that would require a vote, a majority vote of both the school committee and the legislative body, town meeting, to approve. And would be a reserve that would provide, we believe, a transparent and manageable way to address extraordinary and unanticipated increases in special education, special education tuition, and special education transportation expenses. We think that this would be a place that we would go to for extraordinary increases. After the reserve, such a reserve would be funded, that this would be a funding source for extraordinary and unbudgeted increases in these areas. We hope to create the reserve and then fund it over time, potentially beginning with the FY22 school year, budget year.
Any questions on this article? And Mary Ann?
So, so for us, just so that everybody sort of understands where we are, this would represent a change in practice, right? Because currently, the practice is that if there's an increase that is extraordinary and is unexpected, we would be going to the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer. It could be one scenario, or if it's known before town meeting, it may be something where we ask for it as part of the budgeting process. I just want to lay out for people so they understand kind of how we got here. I do support the idea of the creation of this reserve fund.
That's absolutely correct. This would be a reserve that would, it would require both school committee and town meeting approval, not only to create, but to appropriate to it and fund it. So it's a reserve that might not be dipped into every year or with a frequent, with a frequent need. It would really be for those extraordinary increases that would be very difficult for the town to otherwise fund, even through a reserve fund transfer. Typically, the school department tries to absorb these increases as best it can, using savings from other line items as best it can to, to meet these increases. In years potentially such as this one, where we find that very difficult, we would be going to the finance committee for a potential reserve fund transfer. In years where that's difficult, or where those increases are simply too large for the finance committee to, to comfortably address, we would be hoping that a special education reserve fund could provide that infrequent and extraordinary funding source that might be helpful.
Mr. Chair?
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, I'm reading the memo over again, and it says the initial target fund balance amount would be 750,000, and then it would be built up to that. Is that right, with the first contributions made in fiscal year '22?
Right.
I know this was done in January, but that's what we're looking at.
I, I think so. That would be at least a comfortable target. We think that one of the provisions is that you can appropriate to such a reserve fund by doing it through your operating budget as part of the, part of the rules around this type of a reserve fund. You can include a line item in your operating budget and then appropriate to this reserve fund through that. So we would hope over time, over a series of years, that we could get to, get to that level. The cap, the maximum on it is 2% of your required net school spending, which in our case is about 1.2 million. We could never have more than that. But we don't think that we would necessarily need all of that amount.
Okay, and the vote would be two-thirds in and two-thirds out? Is that how?
This is a, with the Municipal Modernization Act, they sort of relaxed some of the rules around this kind of a reserve fund. It's actually a majority vote only of the school committee and the legislative body to create this one. And then, in order to take funds out, it's simply a majority vote of both the school committee and the Select Board.
Okay.
To reappropriate, it would be another majority vote of both, of both the school committee and the town meeting.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other questions or comments? Anne, did you have a question?
No.
Thanks, Anne, very much. Wish you well, and we hope you stay safe.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the town manager and her report. And there are two items in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would like to note for the record the presence of our state representative Denise Garlick, who has been a frequent and, I think, a unanimous attender of your meetings and has been very helpful to me and to the staff during this crisis.
Welcome, Denise.
Mr. Chair, we would ask that the board close the warrant for the special town meeting that we've noticed for June 15th. There are three articles on the warrant at this time. We expect that to be the final number. The first one is, we talked about briefly at a prior meeting, the concept of appropriating for traffic consulting and engineering for a zoning initiative in Needham Heights. We can't, we couldn't do the work this year because the traffic has disappeared. And this, this funding would allow us to wait until the world has come back to normal in order to do those traffic counts for consideration in the future of the Highway Commercial One zoning district. And the estimate from the engineering firm is $45,000 for that full study. And then we have placeholders for the FY20 operating budget and some unpaid bills of prior years, which we will be populating as we know more, until the warrant actually has to go to print. And we will be consulting with the finance committee on the operating budget item. And I would ask that the board close the warrant, subject to technical corrections to be made by the town manager, town council, bond council. You also have through about, probably your first May meeting, if there's some change that you need to make, the board could always-
Thank you, Kate. Before we move to close the warrant, are there any questions or comments? Mary Ann?
I had raised my hand, but, so this is my fault because I didn't understand this one as I was reading this. I am just going to observe that the, the notion that we are waiting to do a traffic evaluation till this fall for Highway Commercial One, to me, is still flawed logic. I do not expect that we will have normal traffic in the fall. And any counts that we do at that time bear no relationship to what we think of as the reality that people were so concerned about. I, I do think the methodology that we- I do think the methodology that we had been previously considering, which was based off prior counts with the renewed counts that we did in February, would be a more accurate depiction than anything I expect to see in the fall. So I can certainly support this, but I don't think doing direct counts in the fall is going to be useful.
So I, thank you. This was the direction that the planning board wanted to go in, and we do have adequate time to schedule meetings with the planning board. I think that they had specifically said when traffic was back to where people were worried about it. And if that's not the fall, then that wouldn't be when we would do it. But we could definitely schedule a meeting this summer with the planning board and decide what the next steps were.
I think Mary Ann makes a very good point, and I would like to see us do that personally. Dan, did you have a question?
Well, kind of to follow up. This is, article would be for the appropriation. And in writing the RFP, we could do it in such a way that the actual timing of the work could be postponed if we really felt the traffic. Am I correct in thinking that?
Mary Ann?
Because it's a warrant article, it isn't tied to the end of the fiscal year. So you could do the work when you're ready for it.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, you had another point on that.
Well, but the challenge would be postponing the work presumes that we're not going to bring the article for Highway Commercial One to a conclusion. And if that's our decision, that we're not prepared to bring that to a conclusion. And that may be where we end up, too, depending on what happens with the world as we come out of the pandemic. That could be a scenario. But if we were trying to lay out the work that gets us to bringing something to town meeting spring a year from now, then waiting till after that, when traffic's back, is not going to be helpful. So.
I agree. Dan?
Yeah, I think that that's, your approach of saying, let's use the data that we've already got in hand, is maybe the one that makes sense. But the idea of having this appropriation available to us, if it would make sense to augment that data with a new review that could be done in a timely way, that would seem to me, at least to have that option open, would make sense. We don't really know what traffic is going to look like September, October, under current scenarios. I would agree. And I would say if it isn't back to what we think is a baseline, there's no point in doing this, the study.
Mr. Chair?
Matt?
On that note, I think it's wise to have it in the bank, so to speak, that if we need to use it and we speak with the planning board, that works. I think the consultant will tell us, and if it is a matter of, okay, the fall's not going to work, we're going to have accurate counts in the spring, then we'll have to have discussion as a board. As you know, I've been inclined to wait and not rush this thing along. People might have different opinions. But then we can make that decision and either say, yes, that timing still works, or that timeline no longer works. So I agree to have this at our disposals wise.
John, did you want to weigh in on this? Okay.
He's on mute.
But he indicated that he didn't. That being the case, is there a motion to close the warrant?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to close the warrant for the June 15, 2020 special town meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to the town manager, town council, and bond council.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mary Ann? Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? John?
The motion, I'm looking at the agenda fact sheet. It says June 15. Did I hit June 20th, or did I hit that wrong? Okay, June 15. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or discussions or questions? That being the case, we'll come to the vote, roll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to the next item in your report, Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few items. Tim McDonald, Director of Health Human Services, is here if you have particular questions. And David Davidson, also, if you have questions about financial aspects of our preliminary reviews. So I just wanted to let the board know, as of today, there were 28,163 cases of COVID-19 statewide. As of today, Needham has a total of 108 confirmed cases. Forty-six community members have recovered from the virus. This is as of today at 5:00. So if you recall, this is a large increase over the number reported last week. And we think this is due in part to increased testing at our long-term care, nursing, and assisted living facilities. The state has helped by deploying the National Guard, which has prioritized these kinds of facilities, which treat and house some of our most vulnerable populations. The Public Health Division is working closely with the facilities so that they, they're all on the same page as to protocols to protect staff and residents. The, I think the lesson here is that as testing capacity increases for the general population as well, we expect to see a higher rate of cases as we move forward through this pandemic. Just a reminder, for every opportunity, stay home as much as possible. Practice our physical distancing when we're out of the house. Wear face masks if you're out of the house and washing hands. The towns has a quite robust website, the COVID-19 website at needhamma/coronavirus. And then the state also has its own website that people can follow. I just wanted to update on donations. We're just so grateful for the community having stepped up. We have a lot of residents making us homemade face masks, which are really coming in handy for places, for instance, like grocery stores, where the, you know, the medical-grade face masks are not prioritized. So we've had a lot of those. There's a Be Kind Needham Facebook group, Spreading Kindness in the Community. We got a lot of face masks from them. We got 1,000 more face masks from our Chinese friends of Needham, which has been a wonderful partner for us. Been a lot of anonymous donations of face masks. We've had some more hand sanitizer from MS Walker, although we can always use more hand sanitizer and all cleaning products. If anybody has those and they're willing to donate them, we have a temporary donation bin outside the Rosemary Complex at 178 Rosemary Street. And the Be Bold Bars has donated significant power bars for our workers. So that's been a great opportunity for them. And then we have a Share the Good News campaign. We had a survey on our daily updates and asked people what they wanted to see. And a lot of people wanted to see more good news stories. So we're asking people to share at goodnews@needhamma.gov what's good right now in the community, what you've seen in terms of kindness. And we would love to share those updates. So that's my brief update. I don't know, Tim, if you have something that you wanted to add on to that?
Sure, just briefly. I think, as Kate noted, that there has been much more testing in long-term care facilities. We're also pleased that the state has revised its guidance and made it easier for group homes to get testing because that's another population that we're very concerned about, both the residents of those group homes and also the staff that care for them. We've done some planning this week, and I really appreciate the building commissioner and the fire chief working so closely with two different service providers that have multiple group homes that they operate to try to help them with some of their backup planning for some contingencies in case staff at one location were particularly affected and they tried to consolidate operations. So we really appreciate the building commissioner and the fire chief working with us on that emergency planning. It's been very helpful. And we obviously want to be as responsive as we can to those organizations in the community that are coming up with these emergency plans. Two points I wanted to hit.
Thank you. I don't think we can thank you enough, Tim. And I don't think we can thank our first responders and all of the town employees who are working under great duress to keep us going in all of this. So I know I speak for all of us when I say thank you, but other board members may want to have a comment or two. Anybody else care to say something? Dan?
Yeah, again, it's been great. The staff has been terrific and all of the first responders and folks around town, the businesses. And I think really, we need to just take note that this is a new experience for 30,000 people in this town that have not had anything like this happen in their lives in many cases. And the fact that people follow the rules, that they've been patient, that they've been good neighbors, and that they're following through with this program that seems like it's going to go on for a while, that deserves a note of appreciation. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else care to say something? Matt?
Thank you. And thank you again, as has been already noted, staff and everyone working on this and you, Tim. I had a health question and then a question for Dave. On the health side, we see the trend in the state. And being Needham-centric focused, it seems that we have not peaked yet, you know, looking at the trend in the state. How are we doing as far as, in your position with, you know, the beds and ICU and demand? Do we feel like we have flattened the curve on a Needham level? I know with the, you know, group homes and the facilities, that we've seen a spike in those. But just overall, do you feel like that we have flattened the curve and that we're mirroring the state?
Sure. I really appreciate the question. I think the town works closely with the hospital, Beth Israel Beaconist Needham. As a community hospital, they don't have as large an inpatient bed volume nor as large an intensive care unit as, for example, the downtown academic medical centers. But I know that they are treating a number of COVID patients. We have some concerns that testing is still not broadly available. There are still some restrictions. The state has been relaxing those restrictions as more testing has become available and laboratory capacity to analyze those tests have increased. But we still have some catch-up to do, especially in long-term care facilities and group homes. So I think it's a little bit too early for us to figure out exactly where we are approaching the peak, at the peak. But I do think that the efforts that residents have made, and Mr. Matthews alluded to it, by following recommendations, by following state guidance, local guidance, it's been incredibly helpful. And that's part of the reason that I think we've seen a, unfortunately, an increase in Needham, but not an increase that is unexpected. We've seen, fortunately, just a regular growth that we would expect. And I think it's because people have worked very hard to maintain physical distance. It's because they've taken seriously those messages about not congregating. And we really appreciate it. I know we have a program, obviously, that provides groceries to homebound seniors that we've implemented instead of the program that we had previously where we would take them grocery shopping. And I wait in line to pay the grocery bill for the town for those seniors. And people are very good about maintaining distance. Restaurants and stores are very good about taping off markings on the floor and on the sidewalk so that people know how far they have to space out. And people have been very compliant, which is really encouraging.
Great. And then a question for Dave, Mr. Chair. As far as the receipts the town has received or not received, have we seen a drop as far as? And I know there's been a delay for tax payments and excise under the governor's order. But do we feel that we've seen kind of the citizens being affected by that on the town side? And I know we also talked about maybe, you know, how to help businesses. I know that's something that we're going to work on or try to figure out their ways to help.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. The receipts, we are a few weeks behind in actually posting them up because of the work-at-home process. Some of the things that can be done remotely, the large receipts in the area of property taxes, for instance, they are coming in at the pace comparable to last year at this time. The receipts that will take longer for us to know is the, what we call departmental receipts. And there's various delays on that. Some of the offices don't have staff in the office and because people mail their payments in, it requires those envelopes to be open and such, and then turned over to the treasurer's office. I'm anticipating a decline in several types of receipts. We're also anticipating some in-kind reduction in expenses as well. Some of the receipts that you would anticipate to be declining would be participant program receipts. But we'd also expect to see a decline in the program expenses where we're not offering programs. We certainly know areas such as interest income. Interest rates have been increasing for a couple of years now. They have taken a significant drop and we're expecting a decline in that revenue stream for the foreseeable future. Permitting and licensing income is down in part because actions of the board has extended licenses for different activities in the town, as well as there are a number of establishments that are closed now that are not in position to pay if, when they're up and running again. There is still much that we don't know. The guidance, I would say, is, for instance, I think it is highly unlikely that the legislature is going to be taking action on the state budget until well into the summer. So there is many assumptions that are going to have to be made coming into the fall relative to adjustments. I think we're fine and attractive. We've taken, as reminded to the board, we have withdrawn a number of articles from the annual town meeting in part because of either preparation time from the requesters or because of conserving resources. We have reduced some of the appropriations going into town meeting. And we're going to monitor that in the coming weeks prior to hopefully the start of town meeting in June.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any other questions? Mary Ann?
I guess two things. One, just getting back to Dave's point, I'm glad to hear that property taxes are coming in at sort of close to a normal or a typical-ish kind of rate. I was wondering, do you have any sense of where our Property Tax Assistance Fund is coming? Because I was worried that we might, in fact, need more dollars there. And I'm hoping that maybe those are coming in at the same time.
Mr. Chair, to the question, a couple of things. Again, the same situation. Most of that is a manual process. But as one that is at Town Hall regularly, I'm one of the people that actually sees the mail. And I see envelopes coming in for the gift of warmth, as well as for property tax donations. So that's certainly there. As a reminder to the board, the Property Tax Assistant application deadline was extended to May 15. So in terms of the need level, we still won't know that for another four weeks.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then I was just thinking back to Tim's comments about testing. I know that, as I've been watching testing, I certainly share the concern about the level of our testing and have continued to watch kind of the rate of positive tests relative to the number of tests overall. And I think today was one of the highest rates ever. It's been in excess of 30% for several days, weeks, maybe at this point now, which really seems to suggest that just the sickest people are getting tested. And, you know, it's one thing to say, yes, the increase in test is due to the focus on testing in some of our senior facilities. But really, all that means is that we're not testing out in the community. And there are certainly cases that are in the community. And they're showing up at hospitals as well. And we just don't understand them well until people, you know, if they're not tested, until they get to a hospital fundamentally. So our being able to go back to any semblance of normal is going to depend on our being able to test and isolate and contact trace quickly so that we don't keep spreading this to many people. And we are not at the point where we're ready to do that in any way, shape, or form yet. But we're going to need that.
No, we're not. There was actually a really interesting opinion piece today in the New York Times about looking at the immunity that may or may not be conferred if you have been exposed to COVID-19. And specifically, if there's a difference in the immunity level from someone who had a mild form of illness that didn't require hospitalization versus someone who had a more severe course of illness that did require hospitalization. That speaks to the larger question of when, you know, there is sufficient potentially herd immunity because so many people have been exposed to the virus, that it might be safe to reopen some things. I think it's something that I'm very interested in. I think it's something that we have comparatively little control over at the local level. So we're really focusing on trying to help long-term care facilities and group homes. We're in touch with them multiple times a week. We're really focusing on donations, and we're recruiting volunteers. So those are sort of the things we're focusing on. But I'm definitely very interested in some of the questions mentioned.
Does anybody else have any comment or question for Dave or Tim? Kate, do you have other items?
No.
Are there any committee reports? Dan? Dan, you're on mute. Dan, you're on mute. Dan, you're mute, but your mic is muted. Dan, your mic is muted. Dan, your mic is muted.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. I could hear you, but I couldn't run my technology at the same time.
You've already used your time, Dan.
My comment, you know, we've made this transition on very short notice to this new format. And I, just as we're changing, have changed the chair, it was really a challenge. I just want to express my thanks and appreciation to John for the leadership that he provided and the steady hand in helping get the format established and let people know what we were going to do so that the community can have confidence, hopefully, in what we're doing. Terrific work. Thanks, John.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary Ann? Matt?
No.
Well, John? That being the case, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Meeting of April 14th is adjourned. Thank you very much. And again, John, thanks for your leadership over the last year and for taking us through the beginning of this crisis. Thank you.
And hopefully, you'll bring it to an end.
Thank you, Kate, for your help.
Thank you.
Again, thanks to you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.